Good evening, everyone. This is the regular council meeting of January 25th, 2021. The time is 7:30 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, can you please do a roll call? And just a reminder, everybody, please state the county you are in. Councilwoman Bliss.
I'm here remote in Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here remote, Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilman Corbett.
Present, remote Madison Heights, Oakland County.
Councilman Geddings. Can't hear you. You need to unmute. Bottom of your screen.
Here in Madison Heights remotely, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilor Roebuck.
Here remote, Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Mayor Potem Soltis.
I am here remote, Oakland County, Madison Heights.
Mayor Grassley.
I am here remote, Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan. Thank you. The invocation this evening and the pledge will be led by Councilman Bliss. Mr. Bliss, you're up.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions that lead to sound plans that all move our city forward. Help us to remember that this meeting is important because it's filled with tangible opportunities for us to take action and improve our city for our residents. Help us to see the significance of even the smallest piece of positive change and work with us to serve all of the city's residents, regardless of political preference, all of whom are relying on us to hear their voice and to do our best to look out for them and their families. Finally, continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is to make our community a more prosperous one with each and every passing day. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
invisible.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? I believe we have a union contract that needs to be added to the agenda if someone could make that motion.
Miss May. I'll add that. I will make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Thank you. There a second?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Motion has been made and seconded to add the Supervisors Union Contract to the agenda that I believe would be under reports. Is that correct?
Yes.
That will be added as D3. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Bliss.
RB. Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings? Face. Get your face.
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That will be added on. Is, are there any other additions or deletions for this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the first item, which is the 2020 Holiday Lights Awards. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, actually, we have a short video and then Corey Almus is going to be presenting, but I think he's having computer problems. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And if that doesn't work, then I haven't had much luck showing with.
I see it.
If we can actually get sound this time.
So you're saying I touch my face and then go to the bottom?
Careful, you might be already muted.
Excuse me.
That's the end of it there, Melissa. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The Beautification Committee received a total of 43 nominations for the 2020 Holiday Decoration Awards. Driving through the city, up and down nearly every residential street, it was clear and obvious that so many of our residents embraced the holiday spirit. This year was like no other. There were so many beautifully decorated houses throughout the city, of which two were selected as co-winners for the 2020 Holiday Decorations Awards. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge two of the owners of these outstanding homes. Please allow me to introduce the council, the owners of these beautiful residents. First up is our co-award winner, Mr. and Mrs. Mark and Robin Cram of 27123 Osmond. They are there. As you witnessed in the presentation, the multitude of colors of the yard ornaments that made this home award-winning. On behalf of the Beautification Committee, congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Cram. Please accept a $50, a $50, sorry, gift card to Sweet Delicious Sweets located at 28091 John R. In Madison Heights is our appreciation of a job well done. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That $50,000 is coming out of his pocket.
I got excited for a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Corbett. We'd also like to recognize our second co-winners, Mr. Kevin Hoffmeyer and Mr. Chris Charbonneau of 30169 Westwood. Again, you saw in the presentation, the ample variety of colorful lights, yard ornaments, and sidewalk luminaires which made this home a winner. The committee sincerely appreciated the amount of time and effort required to decorate this home. Congratulations, Kevin and Chris. We also have a $50 gift card for Sweet Delicious Sweets as our appreciation for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us. Thank you for the co-winners as well as the nominees who are making your home so, look so festive this winter. The Beautification Committee will be reviewing nominated homes in July for the 2021 Beautifications, Beautification Awards. And we're always looking for nominees. Residents can contact the Department of Public Services or the Act of Adult Center in June, Mayor June, to nominate themselves or their neighbors for landscaping beautification. Thank you so much, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you both, both houses. Thank you so much. I have to say that this year, I don't know if I just was out at different times or what, but I really think that with everything that went on this year, so many more people were putting out decorations. And the two of you, the four of you, really did an outstanding job this year. So thank you so much for contributing to the beauty and the light in the city. And Mr. Almus, Mrs. Marsh will coordinate getting them their gift cards.
And I have proclamations for both.
All right. All right. We'll figure that out. We'll get them to you. $50, not $50,000, but we'll get you the $50 gift cards to Sweet Delicious. Thank you again so much. Appreciate that. And thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you to everybody who, who put out lights and who nominated and to the board who went out around and was looking at the lights. It's probably not that tough to do, probably really enjoyed it. But we appreciate the time you took. Thank you very much, Mr. Almus. Appreciate that. Next up, our second presentation is International Holocaust Remembrance Day proclamation on that. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a presentation for that?
Yes, the Human Relations and Equity Commission and Mayor Grassley had recommended that City Council declare January 27th of 2021 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. So I have a proclamation to read. Whereas on January 27th, 1945, the Red Army entered the Auschwitz-Burkhardau concentration camp, liberating the more than 7,000 individuals who were imprisoned there. And whereas just days earlier, the Schutzstockel, commonly known as the SS, forced nearly 60,000 prisoners to evacuate the concentration camp and embark on the infamous death marches, which took thousands of innocent lives. And whereas on November 1st, 2005, the United Nations General Assembly passed a resolution to designate January 27th as an International Day of Commemoration in memory of Holocaust victims, the day upon which the world will remember the Holocaust and its victims of each year. And whereas the Human Relations and Equity Commission was established to advise City Council on programs, policies, and activities that promote positive human relations and equitable outcomes and opportunities in all aspects of community life, including issues related to or affecting minority communities within Madison Heights. And whereas this International Holocaust Remembrance Day and throughout the year, we honor Michigan Holocaust survivors and liberators, and we further encourage all citizens to promote human dignity and positive human relations and equitable outcomes and opportunities in all aspects of community life. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor and City Council of Madison Heights do hereby proclaim January 27th of 2021 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in Madison Heights.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. So that is two days from now, and I know there are a variety of virtual events that are happening. If people want to go online and look at those, I don't know if the HREC is doing anything this year, but I do know that if you go online, there are different events. So thank you for that proclamation. Next up, we have public hearings and first up is meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to council. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and to please identify yourself, your address, your affiliation with the city. And with that, I will open it up if anyone wants to speak, if you can raise your hand or. Clerk, do you have something that you want to read in first or after?
I'll do it last. I just wanted to let you know I had something to read.
Gotcha. All right. Mr. Wright, you had your hand up. Did you want to speak?
I did have my hand up. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, go ahead.
Oh, hello, everyone. My name is Quinn Wright. I live on 906 Parliament Avenue. I'm a citizen of Madison Heights. I've lived here for the past 10 years. I also serve as the chairperson for the Human Relations and Equity Commission. I just wanted to take this opportunity to speak to the council and to address the council by person. I also wanted to take this opportunity to invite all of you out to the Human Relations and Equity Committee meeting. I know there are rules around it, but I've seen Madam City Councilman Clark there and Madam City Councilman Roebuck there. And I know that there are issues with quorum. However, when it comes to dealing with the human relations and equity, and particularly when it comes to our city, it would be nice for us all to have a collective conversation. And I think that starts with you hearing the voice of the folks directly who are making recommendations in terms of human relations and equity. The reason why I came here today was for that and also to address our last meeting and the recommendations that we made. In those meetings, we made a recommendation that the city make a statement in addition to that we acknowledge the voices of the marginalized within the Madison Heights community, the marginalized communities of the people of color and the LBGT community. For a lot of us, there was a lot of concern around what took place at our nation's capital on January 6th in addition to raised concern about what could happen around inauguration. And so the concern was not about what was going on in the nation. The concern was that all of those folks came from different parts of the country, including our city and abroad. And what we wanted to do was take those voices that are marginalized, those voices that don't feel heard, and not whitewash them in a general statement, but acknowledge that there's genuine concern for people in this country as we continue to experience historical event at a rapid pace. And so my challenge to the City Council today is for us to continue having constructive conversations about diversity and inclusion from all perspectives of the people that govern and live in this city. And that's my time. So actually, that's less than my time. But I look forward to talking to you all. I look forward to continuing the conversation. But I would challenge us all to make sure that when we make statements and when we do things for the community that we're being inclusive in those statements to ensure that minorities and all citizens feel hurt, but more so that we're connecting with each other individually and not just sweeping things over with a rug. Because part of the issue that we're facing and we continue to face is the placation of voices that feel like things don't need to be addressed or considered. And we want to make sure that those things are not placated and that we take tangible, reasonable action that can result in meaningful change. And with that, I yield my time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mary Bush, you're up next.
Hi, thank you. This is Mary Bush from 1117 East Hudson, Madison Heights. I just wanted to comment on the brilliant actions of the Madison Heights Emergency Food Pantry that started last year, soon after the epidemic, or the pandemic started. And it's moved to its new home over in Central Church and it will be having a, in conjunction with the church, there's a coat and hat and glove drive next Saturday. So if you all want to clean out your closets and make donations, please feel free to do so. I'm just impressed and in love by city of volunteers and how much volunteerism is just rising in this city. There's an activist mentality that says, we don't sit around and watch problems and say, oh my, there it is. There's, there's an active citizenry that every time they see a challenge, they say, oh, we can handle this and they move on and things get done. And from Councilwoman Clark to Emily Roebuck and all of you, it's just, you know, Melissa Marsh's name comes up in all sorts of conversations because of her brilliant leadership and support. And I just feel like we need to acknowledge those folks. And thank you as City Council people for doing your jobs and letting us do what we do to support our community. So that was it. Thank you so much. Oh, and also support the reduction or the elimination of fines at the library. I hear that's going to be coming up soon and the Friends of the Madison Heights Library support it. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bush. Is there anyone else? Anyone else who wants to speak for public comment this evening? All right, I don't see anyone. Clerk, was that you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Please, go ahead then.
Okay, I received, we received an email from Elizabeth Blumberg. Hi, can the following standard be read during open comments? Madam Mayor and City Council Members, as a treasurer of the Friends of the Madison Heights Public Library, I am commenting in support of the city eliminating late fees at the library. Research on late fees suggests that they do not work, rather late fees disproportionately affect low-income patrons and children, those most likely to benefit from library services. In 2019, the American Library Association passed a resolution acknowledging that fines were a barrier and urged libraries to review their policies. The Friends of the Madison Heights Public Library applauds the library and the city in their efforts to eliminate late fees, improve access to information, and reduce inequality. Sincerely, Elizabeth Blumberg.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments or was that it? A clerk, that was it? Just the one?
That was it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, and seeing no other hands up from members of the public, I am going to close that portion of meeting. All right, meeting is now closed. To open to the public. All right, next up, we have communications. First up, C1, the resignation of Andy Wakeland from the Planning Commission. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, Andy Wakeland has submitted his resignation from the Planning Commission. Staff recommends that council accept this resignation and declare the seat vacant. The Planning Commission approved and read Mr. Wakeland's certificate of appreciation for his service at his last meeting. He served the city from April 2012 to January 2021 on the Planning Commission, expressing, and so he expressed the city's sincere gratitude and recognition for his public services commitment.
All right. All right, so what is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
I moved that the council accept the resignation and Mr. Wakefield declare vacant the seat. We already issued, it would be a proclamation, may I ask, was the proclamation from the city? Okay, then we'll skip that part and just declare the seat vacant and accept his resignation with regret.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss, did you want to second that?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Just a, yeah, just, I'll get out of your way. Just a, just a quick acknowledgement of Mr. Wakefield's efforts on behalf of the community. He, he really has done a very good job. He was a great find for the community. And he is, he and I, a small thing, I could tell you that he is a master chili maker, no small feat. We are both sons of the University of Detroit and he annually takes home the award for chili. So we never had a chance to enjoy that here at the council table. I always think that that's a shortcoming. When you have somebody with a skill like that, they should benefit the council or the community in some way. But we'll have to harass him about that a different time. But as far as his skills and his talents on behalf of the community, they were very much appreciated. Went a long ways to helping to move the community forward. And with that, I will stop. Thank you.
Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, Andy Wakeland has been a driving force for change in our community for many years. Even before, you know, the five years or so I had the opportunity to serve with him on the Planning Commission, he was serving even in the Millennial Mayor's Conference with, you know, then Councilman Brian Harwell. And so he's represented our community for years. Some of the initiatives that he's led were tied to things like improving some of our zoning. He was able to drive some changes in reducing parking requirements. You know, all the really exciting, fun stuff that you definitely hear about in the newspaper all the time. All these little changes that made a huge impact into our city. He will be missed. I'm really happy for him and his family. And, you know, obviously, we're going to miss him, but I'm certain that he'll still be around and, you know, watching as some of the changes, you know, that he's planted, the seeds of change that he's planted, take root and grow into something pretty special here in Madison Heights. And so I wanted to thank him once again. And I'm glad that we were able to get him the proclamation and read that to him live with him on the call because he definitely deserved that for all of his years of service.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion comments from council? All right, I'll just throw in my two cents. Yeah, we had the planning meeting last week, I think it was. And Andy's done a lot, as Mr. Bliss and Mr. Corbett said, and he will be missed. However, he does work for the planning company that we use, so hopefully he will still have input. We still will be seeing him. But I very much appreciated all the help and assistance that he provided. And when I first came onto the Planning Commission, he was very helpful just bringing me up to speed. So Andy, thank you for your service. Really appreciate it. And with that, so you know for the discussion, clerk, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Hang on.
You're there. You just took it off. You took it again, Mr. Geddings. There you go.
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley.
Vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, C2, the Human Rights and Equity Commission Resolution requesting the State of Michigan remove gender designation from state applications. Mrs. Marsh, can I report?
Yes, at the Republican Human Relations and Equity Commission meeting of January 13th, the HREC requested that
the HREC requested that city administration review all forms and applications and when possible, to remove questions of gender or supply an optional choice such as others. Further, the HREC is requesting city council approve a resolution to be sent to the state of Michigan, requesting the same action on state forms and applications when possible. If approved, a copy of this resolution will be sent to Governor Whitmer, Jeremy Moss, and State Representative Jim Ellison. And I have a copy of the resolution. I could quickly read. Whereas language is important and can promote inclusion and representation or reveal and reinforce harmful stereotypes and exclusions. Whereas no person shall be discriminated against based on an individual's gender identity or gender expression in any aspect of employment or benefits, including but not limited to recruitment, selection, hiring, wages, hours, services, or promotion. Whereas the city of Madison Heights has an obligation to ensure that the language used on city forms does not discriminate by sex, social gender, or gender identity, and does not perpetuate gender stereotypes. Whereas the state of Michigan should consider removal of gender identity designations on applications to prevent discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression. Gender identity refers to a person's internal deeply felt sense of male, female, or something other or in-between, regardless of the sex they were assigned at birth. Gender expression refers to an individual's characteristic or behaviors, such as appearance, dress, mannerisms, speech patterns, or social interactions that may be perceived as masculine, female, or other. Now therefore be it resolved that city of Madison Heights requests that all gender-specific designations be removed from applications for jobs, benefits, or programs by the state of Michigan. Further be it resolved that a copy of this resolution will be sent to the Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, State Senator Jeremy Moss, and State Representative Jim Ellison.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Mrs. Mayor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I would like to move that we, trying to get the right language, approve this resolution to, requesting the state of Michigan remove gender designation from state applications.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings? Mr. Geddings, we can't hear you. There you go.
Yes.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Grassley?
I vote no. Motion carries 6-1. Thank you. Next up is Report D1 from the City Manager, the Fee Schedule Amendments. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, presented for council consideration as an updated fee schedule for 2021. Fees are typically submitted as part of the budget process and adopted for a July 1st start date. However, we need to adjust to allow costs associated with our contractual planning services to be passed through to the end user. Instead of suggesting this revision alone, staff and I reviewed the entire fee schedule and are suggesting several changes that would be beneficial. And I will quickly go through these. In addition to the revision of the planning review fees, we will be proposing an elimination of late fees at the library, the addition of the replacement fee for the hotspots and the laptops that are now being loaned. We will be adding a fee for FOIA for police for the large files due to body cameras and in-car camera footage. We will be proposing increasing the RV lot fee. We would be adding a part building rental fee and also including the Monroe Park Pavilion and park buildings. And we would be increasing the garbage bag fee. So if anyone would like any more details on those, I can go through those as well. But staff and I recommend that council adopt this fee resolution.
Mrs. Marsh, just a point of clarification, the library fines, is that included in that to be removed or reduced?
Yes.
It is. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
I move that council accept the fee schedule as revised by staff.
Thank you. There's support?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Renew. Clerk, you're on mute. You need to. I'm on mute. Sorry. We got you. Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? You need to send mute. Councilwoman Clark, we missed it.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up, from City Manager, appointment to the Community Advisory Board. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, city council is being asked tonight to appoint two members to the newly created Community Advisory Board. This is not a city board. The Community Advisory Board will be overseeing the community funding awards generated from the community outreach agreements that the city negotiated with holistic industries and alternative RRECs that will establish nonprofit funds once operational. Funding is $25,000 per year per company with an additional 1% of net profits once the businesses are operational. The mission of this board is to make funding decisions based on available funding, the company's original licensing application, community outreach goals, the city's strategic plan. Projects that generate the largest community benefit while aligning with its initial licensing application and the city's current year strategic plan will be given highest funding priority. But there are no terms on these boards. These positions will roll into the nonprofit trust board when those funds are set up.
All right. So at this point, we need to make an appointment of two people. So I'm going to open it to council if someone wants to make, make an appointment, make nomination, have discussion.
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we appoint Josh Champagne to this board.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
Yep, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to nominate Josh Champagne to the board. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'm not familiar with Josh Champagne. Mr. Bliss, could you talk a little bit about why you're recommending him for this board?
Please.
Sure, Councilwoman Clark. Josh Champagne is actually the newly appointed Chair of the Planning Commission, taking over in a former Chair Wakeland's stead. So he's been really active with the city. He's been a part of a lot of discussions that have driven the city forward. And since his spot on the Planning Commission doesn't intersect, you know, the Planning Commission wouldn't be requesting any money from this board. So it gives him a non-bias ability to evaluate while still being heavily active in a deciding voice in the future of the city. So I think he'd be a great choice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Bliss, thank you for the explanation. And is there any other discussion regarding Josh Champagne?
Your Honor.
Just Saltus?
I just want to put on the record, I have nothing against the gentleman. I don't know him, but I'm going to vote unknown, no matter who it is because of how I feel about the marijuana industry, so.
Mr. Saltus, thank you. Any other discussion comments from council? All right. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Yes. Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
No.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes. Oh.
No, you're good. Gotcha. And Mayor Grassley? I vote yes. Motion carries 6-1. Thank you. Next up is the second spot, if someone wants to make an appointment there.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'm not sure if the person would even be willing, but I'd like to make a nomination for Quinn Wright. I think he's been an up-and-coming leader in the community and I, I'm thinking he's got some pretty good ideas for how we can use that funding.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. I don't believe he submitted an application.
Oh, okay.
No. Okay. Thank you. All right. So I think, I believe, Mrs. Marsh, there were seven applications that we received. There were nine. There were nine. Okay. I knew it was an odd number. All right. So from the other eight that we received. Oh, Councilor Rorback?
Yeah. I, I really, I looked at these very carefully. I read through their applications. I looked them up online quite a bit and tried to understand who, who each of them were. So I, I think that any one of them would probably do a perfectly fine job in this capacity. I agreed with Mr. Bliss's assessment about Mr. Champagne. So I would make a motion that we select Chelsea Smolish as a second member of the, of the board.
Okay. Thank you. Is there support?
This is Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
Um, I actually, I wanted to comment after Mr. Saltus's last time, but I had a sticky button here and I couldn't. We're having mute problems tonight at the table, I think. But I, I don't, I don't see this. I mean, I appreciate the gentleman's comments about, about where the money's coming from and all that. But the fact of the matter is the money's going to be spent on behalf of the community. And so I have no problem that a, it's wide, a group of people will participate in deciding how the money's spent. We can have that discussion again on the merits of, of drugs or whatever at another time. But that's not this. This is spending money on behalf of the community. So I have no problem. And the two recommendations are fine. I agree with the comment that I think any one of the people would be, who had submitted, would be excellent candidate. So I'll defer to someone else's judgment on it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Anybody else? Any discussion? Does anyone want to make an alternate or we want to just move to vote? No other discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I'm not sure if Councilwoman Clark would like to hear some of the background on this candidate as well. But if Councilor Rorback would like to throw out a couple of reasons, I think that that would be helpful.
For sure. Councilor Rorback, if you could just, for the record?
Certainly. From what I don't have it in front of me anymore, all of my notes about it. But from my recollection right now, she was a, she's a resident of the city that has, you know, she seems well-educated. She's a, looks like a graduate of U of M Dearborn, has extensive experience working kind of in strategy and analytics. And I felt like that was a good, good fit for this particular job for, you know, for making decisions based on, on data and information. And, you know, and another reason I wanted to make sure we had, you know, both men and women represented on this board from the, from the community.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other comments from anybody on council?
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Mayor Potem Saltus?
No.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Hold on.
No, you're good. We can hear you. Nope, you put in mute.
You're, you're still muted, Bob.
There you go. Nope.
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley? I vote yes. Motion carries 6-1. Congratulations to Josh and to Chelsea. Next up, we have D3, which is the Supervisor Union Contract. Mrs. Marsh, is there any kind of report?
No, none other than this is following along with the same pattern that we had discussed with city council originally and that has been approved for the firefighters and department heads.
Great. Thank you. What is wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of staff and approve the department heads contract. I said that right? That's the correct one, right?
No supervisors.
Supervisors, okay. The supervisors' contract as submitted.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Grassley.
Councilman Geddings?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings? I'm mute, Mr. Geddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley? I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. And then next up is F1, the, from Purchasing Coordinator, purchase of two 2021 Dodge Durango Pursuit vehicles for the Police Department. Mrs. Marsh, can I report?
Yes, the 2021 adopted budget includes funding for the replacement of two police department vehicles, vehicle 111 through the general fund and 106 through drug forfeiture. Staff and I recommend the approval of the purchase of two 2021 Dodge Durango Pursuit vehicles for replacement from Galliana's Van Dyke Dodge through the Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative. The unit price for each vehicle is $36,193, bringing the total to $72,386.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
I move that we approve the purchase of two 2021 Dodge Durango Pursuit vehicles for vehicles number 106 and 111 from Galliana's Van Dyke Dodge to the Oakland County Purchase Cooperative at a unit price of $36,193 for a total of $72,386.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded regarding the purchase. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley? I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, the minutes from the regular city council meeting of January 11th. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor. I move to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2021.
Thank you. 21. There's support?
Your Honor.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Support, please.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Hang on.
Mr. Geddings, we can hear you.
Yes.
Counselor Rorbach?
Yes.
Mayor Quatims Saltus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Graystein? Vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Seeing no more business before us this evening, I invite closing comments from counsel, starting with Councilman Corbett.
Just a, two quick items. And noting from our votes this evening, I was glad to see the fines gotten rid of from the library that I think was really a progressive move. And my wife will be very happy because I personally have been supporting the library for years due to my forgetfulness. But on that serious note, I think all the points that were made are valid. You know, if I thought it would protect the integrity of the book collection, then I wouldn't think that way. But as a matter of fact, money really isn't the issue. It's a matter of remembering and having access to get the books back to the library sometimes. So there was that. And also, just to revisit quickly the item of the appointments to the community board. The other good part about that was, I think, two newer names, two more newer people becoming involved in the community. After you've done this for a while, you get tired of your own voice sometimes. And it's nice to see new people stepping up, getting involved. That's always, that's always a good sign. And so good luck to them with their work and the group of new people that have been coming on board. I think that's all very positive. Community has to renew itself or it goes stale and dies. And we can't have that either. So while there has to be diversity and representation at all the levels, it's nice when we do have a new influx of people. So, and I think a lot of that goes to the council members here this evening for making sure to bring in a new crop of volunteers and encouraging them and supporting them where necessary and helpful. So anyway, that's it. Thank you, Your Honor. Have a good evening to everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Really excited that tonight we approved the new rental options as a part of that fee schedule. So now our citizens are going to be able to leverage more of their parks. You know, before I was just being able to rent the gazebo and the active adult center. Now they're able to rent any of the park buildings and even the Monroe gazebo, which is, or the, any of the parks will now be able to be utilized for birthday parties or anything. I know for me, the really exciting one is the park shelter in Civic Center Park with the mural on it. I think that that is going to be an incredibly awesome birthday party destination. It's not far from the play structure, not far from the hill. And you've got, you know, the mural on it for photos. I know that, well, at least I'm sure that all of the J C's who raised all of the money that they did to build that building and donate it to the city so many years ago would be appreciative of this. I know I'm going to send my parents a text after this meeting, letting them know. I think just the ability for residents to be able to rent that and utilize it for parties, you know, all these years later, I think is a really positive step forward for our city. It's one of those little things that make a big difference to somebody's life. Secondly, prior to this meeting, I met with the Trail Tunes Project Committee. We're going to be announcing our call for musicians soon. It's actually going to be like right before our next meeting. So make sure to follow the city's social accounts or check the website for any of the info. If you're a musician or you know one and you wanted to pass it along. Also, this year, we're also adding a limited number of small vendor tables. So if you do crafts, you have, you know, a very, like a small business that you wanted to set up at, definitely look out for that as well. So you can be a part of the festival and support the festival as a vendor there. Lastly, for those who are interested, we actually have a few public meetings tomorrow. You got the Eagle update on the process, on the progress of the EPS site. That discussion on the cleanup is at six, if you're interested in following up on that. And then we have meetings for the library board, which will be discussing a really exciting grant, and the arts board discussing some more murals and music. You know, as was noted in the earlier discussion, I think during public comments, each of us council members have the opportunity to serve on boards as council reps. Just so happens, both of those are boards that I will be on. So I'm going to get the recap on the Eagle event. And I'm hoping that at least a few of you will join me and, you know, dial into the arts board or the library meeting. There's going to be some great discussions about how we're moving the city forward in both of those realms. And I'd love for you to hear live from the people that volunteer and serve on those boards, just all of the awesome things and awesome ideas that they have. So join me if you can. If not, I'll make sure to give an update at the next meeting. All right, thank you, Your Honor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bliss. Counselor Rorbach?
Hi there. I agree. I'm really excited about the getting rid of the late fees. I, like Mr. Corbett, have been regularly forgetful about returning books. And so I know, as a younger woman, I was sometimes so ashamed about how long a book may have gone out. I was like, my fee is going to be more expensive than buying the book at this point. So it, but what I appreciate about this thoughtful decision was that it continues to give access to people in the community who may have, like, might feel shame about, you know, this lapse in judgment or, you know, decision. And they might not ever come back to the library. And we don't want that. We want people to have access to information and tools that the city provides. And so I'm really, I'm really thrilled about this. We are, it brings us on par with a lot of other cities and their decisions. So I'm glad we're doing that. I also am really excited about the parks rentals piece, so yay. I also want to say thank you to the members of the Human Relations Equity Commission. Those folks have been doing so much work. Mr. Wright is here tonight, and I appreciate so much what he came to say tonight. I also appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone behind the recommendation to eliminate the gender question, especially on forms that can be eliminated. I appreciate that it is, you know, we're coming to it with a thoughtful discussion on the Equity Commission. And then we're able to bring it here to this board. So I'm really appreciating everyone tonight who supported that and helped us move it forward. I also am looking forward to continuing work with the commission. I know they are a group of highly motivated people who really want to do good stuff for our city and for the people who've been marginalized in our city in particular. And I appreciate that. And I just say thank you. I'm hoping that we can continue that work and make it, make it even better in the future. That is all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rorbach. Mr. Sherman, anything from the attorney's office?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh, anything from the city manager?
No, I had an update about Eagle and our other boards, but Mark already covered that, so I won't bore everybody again.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Geddings?
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to say I'm glad that the governor is lifting the restrictions on the restaurants for February first. I think it'll help all the restaurants here in the city to get back to somewhat normalcy, if you will. And looking forward to going out and having breakfast. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, so I just want to first thank everyone who came to public comment to speak. It's always great to hear the public opinion when it comes out, whether you're criticizing or whether you're like commending someone. It's always great to know that there are people involved. Mr. Wright, your heartfelt statements were felt here. I am in 100% support of everything that you're saying. You've become a great leader in this community, and it's wonderful to see you rise. I also want to like not underscore the very exciting moment that the Human Rights and that Human Relations and Equity Commission gets to share of making their first apology or policy change suggestion. And where it seems largely symbolic to create a resolution to try and remove these, these qualifications or the gender from these forms, it seems insignificant. It's extremely significant, particularly we're at the height of another civil rights era. It's not only extremely significant that the resolution gets made, but the way you vote on it is extremely significant, too. And I want to really just tell the group at the Human Relations and Equity Commission, I'm so proud of you. We're very fortunate to have great relationship with Jim Ellison and Jeremy Moss. And I really hope that they're, that we're able to get that resolution into the governor. And if she could say something about it, that would make it even sweeter. So I appreciate all of counsel tonight who voted in favor of that. And I just want to congratulate the H R E C on their first win. We made two parts to the agenda tonight. It feels like it's been, like it's been running through mud to get stuff going. But we've only been in action for two months and already we're making moves. So congratulations and thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Councilwoman Clark. Mayor Quatims Saltus?
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick, a few things. It isn't the first time, and I'm sure it's not the last time, Councilman Corbett and I disagree. But however, I appreciate everyone's opinions. They all count, and I respect that. I just want to also thank and recognize all the city employees from staff at the City Hall, the Treasurer's Office, the H R, City Manager's Office, City Manager, D P S. They always take care of our city, especially during the winter, plowing the streets and roadways. I'm sure they'll be out there tomorrow morning. I never see, also, I never see, and you see in other cities where those, during the winter, a waterline main breaks. I don't, I don't ever recall, haven't seen that. So I think, you know, good job, Coach Almas, on that, on your team. And especially for our public service emergency, from emergency call takers, fire department, police, especially interacting with the public during a COVID pandemic is dangerous in itself. Earlier tonight, I just saw two police cars, squad cars assisting broken down cars or what have you right in the middle of traffic. And I know from doing EMS where that can be a very terrifying situation, traffic flying by you. And so I appreciate that. And in fact, the one officer did get injured in that regard. So I hope she's doing well. I think she is. But so we all appreciate that. And for all the city employees, you know, good job, and we're all glad that you're on our team. I too agree with the library fees. I have my horror stories, right, and other Sinclair Shores where I just forgot I had the book. And I get a, you know, it's on my credit report. So, you know, a book that costs maybe 10 bucks. And so, you know, I finally bought it and won it. But it reminds me of, I don't know who was old enough to know about the Seinfeld episode where, you know, he had a 20-year fine and the librarian tracked him down after so many years. That's how I felt like it was. But anyhow, it was a good meeting, and I appreciate everyone showing up and giving the comments. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you, members of the public, for speaking tonight. Appreciate that. And yeah, I, the library fines, removing that, really important. One of the first things that happened when I moved here was I had to get my driver's license updated. And it wasn't because I needed my driver's license updated. It was because I couldn't get a library card if it wasn't. Library refused to give me one until I had my address. So that was really important. And I don't know exactly what's been going on at the library with the pandemic, but I returned my books and they show up that they're not there. And I get these fees for 50 cents and a dollar, and then all of a sudden it's returned. So they seem to be working on it already, and I give them a lot of credit. I really appreciate that everything that the library has done to stay open and to serve our residents, offering, you know, the carryout that you can just put it on hold and go pick up. So I think that getting rid of the fees and the fines was a really good idea. I appreciate the remembrance of the Holocaust. Last year, when we had our meeting about this time, Mayor Quatims Saltus made a comment about it. And I said to him, I said, thank you for saying that. I almost forgot. And I said that my family had actually died, not in Holocaust, but they, or not in Auschwitz, but somewhere else. And I found out in the last year that that's actually not true. They actually did die at Auschwitz. So it really means a lot to me personally. And with everything going on in the country, the statement "never again" is really, really important. But it's not just from the Jewish standpoint of "never again." It's "never again" for anyone, whether it's because you look different or because you have a lifestyle that's different. Never again. Should you be picked on? Should you be discriminated against? Should you be murdered because you are different? So I think that that's really a big thing for me that I would like people to take away from, from this proclamation. Just if you have thoughts, you know, something that's a little bit different, just maybe educate yourself and make sure you don't go down the path so that we have any kind of genocide again, never again. With respect to my no vote with the H R E C's resolution, I just want to clarify that that was to be taking it to the state. I completely agree that if gender isn't relevant, if you're not talking about a body part that is only anatomically belonging to one gender, then I don't know why it needs to be on a form. But that's something that I just, I, I don't think that it's the role of the local government to be going to the state or the federal or the county and asking them to make those changes. And interestingly enough, I was doing something online today with my finances. And it said, can you just confirm this? And it had my date of birth, my address, all these things. And it had gender is not disclosed. And I would have filled this out at least 10 years ago. So I think that's, that's something that people can do is if you have that option, and if you want that option, ask for it. So I just, I don't think that that's something that we really need to be doing at the local level, telling the state or the federal. But I do believe that we have set that up for the city so that it is being removed or it has been removed. I want to congratulate Josh and Chelsea, our newest volunteer board members. And Bliss already mentioned the EPS update tomorrow. And just a reminder that the pantry is working with Central Church. They are accepting donations of winter wear today until nine. So you've got about half an hour to drop off stuff. Or if you can't make that, they're accepting donations on Thursday from seven to nine. And then if you're in need, you can pick up on Saturday from nine to 12 at the church, at the pantry at the church. That is it for this evening. Our next meeting will be Monday, February eighth. The time is eight thirty-five. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.